Okay, Teresa, you're first on the agenda with a C D that needs renewed.
Yes, the economic development C D is due to be renewed at the beginning of the year. And I just wanted to get your input on what you want to do. Do you want to go ahead and reinvest it for the six months? You want to go out to a year or if you want to change the amount?
Okay, we don't have the amount or what we headed. That I don't have, I don't think.
The C D, um, eleven, twelve, it's five hundred eighty thousand is the amount for the C D currently. Um, I just did one out at the end of last month and it was around four and a half. Yeah, they are coming down unfortunately. Usually a year is a little bit lower because of the longer term, but. Um, it is currently with First Federal, actually. Yes.
Does anybody have a crystal ball that knows that your rates are going to be up? Six months or we go for a year?
What, uh, what is the rate for a year, you know?
I don't.
Slightly lower.
It is a little bit lower. I, I don't even want to look at the ones that are a year because we've got a few that are a year once, but they're a lot higher because they were bid several months ago.
I know I was, I don't know whether ours is different than if I put money in the C D down there at the First Federal, but I know it was a little bit lower, but it wasn't a lot. Had two different one-year rates thing of how you.
You have a, you have a recommendation?
I, you know, I mean, I would, you know, unless you've got something earmarked for that money here soon, um, possibly put it in and, uh, at least for the six months, you know, at least you're beginning some type of return on it.
So any motion from the boards?
Uh, so yeah, I would, excuse me, make a motion to reinvest that for six months.
Second? I can second. So a motion of second to reinvest the five hundred eighty thousand dollars for us six months. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nathan?
Good evening, um, couple of courthouse project updates and then a couple of year-end C D C updates. Starting with change orders, I don't have any for consideration tonight. There is one still outstanding regarding sidewalk construction that I've previously presented to commissioners. It requires a little more discussion before I'll be comfortable representing it. Since the last board meeting, I have approved three which have been reported to commissioners. These have addressed changes to framing to accommodate an electrical panel, altering plans for powering B P units, which are, I am told, the quote-unquote "brain boxes" that control communications between H VAC mini splits and the units outside, and altering plans for powering electric duct heaters. The three combined totaled just more than thirteen thousand dollars. Through today, forty-one change orders have added five hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-two cents to the construction and design allocations within the project budget. As I reported with commissioners via email, I spent a couple of hours with Ton and Blank and Luminot assessing plaster conditions in the building last week. Plaster repair replacement is part of the painter's work, but it's scheduled on a time and materials basis with an allowance built into their bid rather than a concrete number. We'll be approaching plaster work in multiple ways depending on the location and severity of the damage. New plaster in some places, new drywall in some places, plaster repair in some places, and new drywall laminate in some. And the allowance will cover a decent chunk of this, but we'll probably be seeing A D C O coming down the pipeline to cover costs in excess of this allowance. The repairs were addressed this way in the bidding process because significant sections of the walls were covered in wallpaper and couldn't be assessed fully. Additionally, some of the plaster has been determined to be faulty as demolition has led it to reveal itself to being weak. Like, we took down some trim and, once the nails were pulled out, it, there was nothing providing the stability in the wall there. Any questions on change orders? Okay, uh, project finances. Our owner's contingency has a current balance of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and fifteen cents, a little more than two hundred and nine thousand if we account for the not-yet-approved sidewalk change order at its full cost. We have a little more than seventy-two thousand dollars in future potential interest that can, upon being receded, be added to the contingency. And then most recent progress on the project. Uh, painters are almost done with taping and mudding. Expect to start priming in the basement later this week. A little bit of priming has already been completed on the upper levels, as have some plaster repairs and a little bit of staining with the custom stain color that the subcontractor mixed. It's fairly close to the old stain, but a little warmer with a hint of red to it, and it's actually quite nice. I think, uh, one of the project management guys said it kind of had a cinnamon tone to it, and it, and it's very nice and warm and will look really good in there when it's fully applied. I noticed today that a little bit of exterior priming has been done too way up along the roof line on the east side of the building. Installation of grids for tile ceilings and framing for drywall ceilings has been finished while our M E P subcontractors continue with their work. All of the masons' work on the tower is done except for caulking, and the replacement of the louvers will be done from the inside, so we should indeed expect the scaffolding to come down before Christmas. Any questions on the courthouse project?
Have we had any successful negotiations with the town?
Not yet, no. That's still ongoing. And next week, either project manager Matt Nochevich, superintendent John Allen, or both will be joining me to give a year-end report to the commissioners. So if anyone is able to be here to catch it when it's on YouTube, you'll be able to get, uh, update straight from the horse's mouths. Okay, moving on quickly, just some year-end updates from the C D C. I think that we largely had a good first year under our new structure, other than the economic development commission's work on developing a formal process for tax abatement applications and reviewing one abatement request and the Tourism Advisory Council's ongoing efforts toward developing a tourism strategic plan. I did not have to put a lot of mileage on the new commissions, but it did allow me to be more efficient overall, and I feel like the three C D C meetings we held were more productive than some past sessions had been. As part of my 2024 performance evaluation process, I've been working on some defined goals and objectives for next year. Historically, our strategic plans have generically been my roadmap, but we're honing in on a few specific short-term priorities, both within the plan's vision and in terms of how I allocate my time. I am simultaneously working on having appraisals done and preparing a tentative project budget so as to do everything in my power not to put our tentative one million dollar ready two-point-oh housing project allocation at risk. It is my understanding that Willow Creek Villas has tentatively scheduled the groundbreaking for the project on Galbreth Drive for next week, but I have not received confirmation of the details yet. In the last week, I visited with leadership at two of our largest manufacturing employers, something I am hoping to do more regularly as part of my 2025 goals. Both of these meetings left me feeling quite optimistic about the kinds of investment we may be seeing in the next few years. Questions?
With the, uh, new commissions that were aligned, were you able to fill all the seats?
All but one, and I think we have, uh, an angle on making sure that that one is filled next year.
How often have they met?
So the C D C, with the exception of one time where we had a lot of last-minute issues and didn't have quorum, the C D C meets quarterly. That's the only one that is regularly set so that I can check in with the primary governing body. The others, they all meet either January or February to meet the statutory requirement for reorganization and then as needed. So the redevelopment commission met twice, the economic development commission met three times, the industrial park board met once, and the tourism advisory council had two full council meetings and two strategic planning committee meetings.
And they establish their own goals and report those to you, or how does that work?
Yes, um, to an extent, a lot of what their work is going to be is going to be more like, I don't want to say reactive, but project-driven rather than, uh, some of the bigger picture stuff that might touch on all of them or might be C D C directly. Uh, but as we work on honing in on these 2025 priorities, certain ones of them will be more aligned. Like, housing, any progress we make with the proposed housing project will probably be something where the redevelopment commission plays a pretty important role. Um, the tourism council does have one or two very clear goals going to next year. The most important one, as I noted, being, uh, finishing and, uh, and recommending a tourism strategic plan to bring to the C D C and commissioners for full adoption.
Any other questions? Or Nathan, any comments? Thank you.
Okay, we have Lightstream here again tonight.
Uh, one of the things I handed to all of you was a document with a map from Lightstream.
Yes.
Thanks again for having us. Um, I think this was some information that was missing last, uh, week before. Showing you, um, thirty thousand of you of the highlighted yellow, red areas where we have existing fiber optic services. Yellow areas that propose expansion.
Uh, the yellow area is the proposed, um, expansion that we're looking to, to build at this time. And some above is some details of Miles' programs.
And I think Nathan has sent me some of this the next day after the meeting and talked to the two commissioners. We kind of gave a thumbs up to Nathan at that time, and that was relayed to you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Good evening. Good evening. How are you? Good.
And it's wonderful to see an audience so interested in helping. It's terrific to see when you sit there and they sit there.
All by yourself?
There's nobody in the audience. I want to tell you, it's not very entertaining, but this is absolutely terrific. I'm glad you're all here. Congratulations on being here.
Veterans?
Thank you very much, Mr. Sir.
You had one here, too.
Right, thank you. My name's Claude Lemire. My background's in economic development. I purchased a house up on the river.
I think it's going to be three years now. And, uh, I found it. The computer went to locate it, bought it, just what I wanted.
Never been in it downtown.
So we rolled down and, you know, I saw the courthouse. And I went, oh, God, this is made. What this is? And so I went in the lower level across from Brad's office there. And as you enter, there's the Hall of Honor, all those pictures of everybody that served since World War One. You just want to be quiet. It's a place of reverence. And I walked up the stairs, walked around the building, and I thought, my God, this is, this is terrific. And I looked at the date when this building was built. We had Civil War veterans walking up and down those stairs. So this project, the revamp, is terrific. And I understand the money, believe me. It's an outrageous amount of money, but it needed to be done. It's who we are. And then I walked out of downtown, the aqua house. The bank, the buildings are magnificent. Although we need a little bit of clean-up work on some of those buildings. Some of the folks have already started, done some really terrific renovation on their buildings, and it's expensive. So I thought, I said to my wife, you know, I want to see if I can write a grant and present it to the town and to the county. That we could maybe redo something with the smaller buildings, people that own buildings, something for just outside improvement. So I wrote the grant. You guys all have a copy of it, and I want you to go through it tonight because you need to read it thoroughly and understand every part of it. So if you have a question, I can come back and you can, I can answer the question, maybe something I want to change. But I put a lot of work into it, and I think it'll be a good thing for our community. It's not an expensive grant. It's a five-thousand-dollar matching grant. So, I mean, you need a whole lot of work done on your buildings with that grant today, but you can start to see a lot of them. That's all they need. So you can use it for awnings, new awnings, stairs, anything on the exterior of the building other than the roof. You own a building, you better have a good roof on it, otherwise you'll own a building. So you have the grant. I'd like you to take your time, read through it, any notes you might have, come to them next weekend. I'm asking the county for twenty-five thousand. I'm asking the town for twenty-five thousand, and then our committee's going to try to raise twenty-five thousand. So that's a lot of five-thousand-dollar grants that we could put into that downtown. And as you see, I have the committees all set to renew these. So I, I mean, it's set. I just need to have you guys read it over with your mere opinion of the, I've asked a grant to set up a special account. The only thing that goes into that account would be the money for these grants. That's it, and only one person can have it. I've been through this before, so I know a lot of the setbacks. So that's all, we have that all in place. So I'd like you to look at this and consider it because this town deserves it. This is an example of the American farming community and how it built from nothing. We have to keep it up. Let's get those stores filled. Let's get some special events going down there. Let's bring that back, let downtown back to what it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Sir.
Maybe more, no. Um, since you're asking for county money, this also apply to other towns within the county?
No, it's just, there's a, that's why I want you to read through the whole thing. There is just a map of buildings that this is going to include in that downtown. So you need to go through that whole brochure and read every part of it and then jot down any questions you have. But this program will be carried every town in the county.
Thank you.
I'll tell you all something. Who are we?
Okay, and under other business, have approval and signing of our joint session minutes from October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. I'd make the motion to approve, part of the council on the commissioner.
Hey, I would second that. I review them on second.
Move and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ken, you want to do the same?
For the council, I'll, uh, accept a motion for the ten fourteen twenty-twenty-four joint session minutes. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those against? Passes.
Okay, and the transfer of ownership, release, communication agreement regarding A nine Bobby. Hey. Uh, we would still need to, uh, approve this on the part of the commissioners. I'd make that motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have, uh, on the agenda, agreement for payment of third-party compliance monitoring. Uh, all four, four companies have signed off on this. Plus, we also received some other information just today that probably needs our attention at this time. So I would move that we table that at this, this time.
Hey, I would second that.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you have an appointment of the Northwest Indiana Solid Waste District Board? Mike, did you serve on that or is that the other Mike?
Both of you.
So, uh. Okay, well, I think for the part of the commissioners, we're going to nominate Mike, aren't we?
Yeah.
And I would second that. So we'd have Mike McClure serving as our Northwest Solid Waste pointee. Favors say aye.
Aye.
Ken, do you have someone?
I think we did that, didn't we do that last week for, for you, Mike?
Yeah, at the meeting.
Mine, um. Oh, okay. I mean, I. But that's, somebody on the board feels differently. I'm fine to go ahead and leave Mike if you're willing.
Any other items?
I have one. You have, I think, I think it's on the council's agenda, but it's the branding or the, or approval of the Personal Policies Handbook update. Because it, it needs to be approved by both council and commissioner.
I understand that. We've had different additions that ever ended up in the.
Right, this is really just approving. We're processing. Nothing has been changed. It's, uh, this is all emailed to everybody in its new form on eleven twenty-seven of this year, and it's took twelve amendments that have been changed since the last update in twenty-seventeen. You did twelve different, um, amendments were approved by both boards. They were just amendments. You had to look at them, had to like seek out the amendments. So this, put the amendments in the body of the, of the book. That's it. And if we approve this and it's form, then Nathan can put it on the website.
No.
Personal handbook.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion to approve the, um, Boye Handbook. It's been updated.
I, I would second that motion.
Further discussion? Favors say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we can go ahead and take care of that now. This will be, I'll accept a motion to, uh, pass the, uh, effective December ninth, twenty-twenty-four policy handbook in its updated form. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes.
Ken, I just wanted to update you as we're moving forward here with the, um, ARPA funds. Or as to, I begin here, I think it has to be satisfied by the, uh, end of December this year as far as where the money is going to go. And what, uh, was added since the last time we brought this to you, we did mention time clocks. So we have approved the time clocks. That was fifty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars, the installation of two plus, plus the clocks. Um, earlier in our, one of the discussions that we had earlier, uh, the, uh, we have set up a replacement plan with computers, with rowing, where we're doing twenty-five computers every year to get a replacement plan in place. And at this time, uh, we have like twelve computers left that need replaced, so that was twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. We are looking at, uh, purchasing the, uh, through the Crossroads ambulance sales, another striker power load system, which would give us one for each of the four ambulances. That was thirty thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. And with rowing, to, uh, replace the fiber that's going from the Justice Center to the courthouse, um, upgrading that fiber, and when they were looking at this, didn't even locate the old fibers. I don't know how they would repair it if something happened. This is for the boring and reconnecting to Justice Center and, and courthouse with, uh, new fiber, upgraded fiber. That was fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So, um, we have a balance there maybe of around a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Um, so commissioners, we were talking about donating a certain amount of funds to each of the fire departments, the five fire departments. Since this money was a result of COVID, those people were out on the front lines, uh, doing a lot of work, putting themselves at risk. So, once we get down to some real final figures, which we should have on Monday, have a resolution passed, we would also like to donate some funds to each of the five fire departments that serve our county. So I'm just looking at the money, you know, we gave each thirty thousand dollars and fifty thousand. That isn't a proposal, that's just talking right now. We'll wait till we get some final figures to do that. Just had any comments, not wanting to do that or whatever. That's kind of the last thing that we haven't seen. Put a, a nail in so far, really. Any comments or questions on our plan there for the ARPA funds?
Oh, I think, uh, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, because they, they get, uh, each department gets five thousand per year from county and it'd be a nice addition. I know that I've talked with several of the fire departments, they can put that to good use.
Again, this will be finalized at Monday's meeting and, as Kevin, it is a resolution shows where the money is, is going. It was just shy of two-point-four million the county received, which sounds like a lot, but we were seventh from the bottom, the amount of money that every county gets. Anything else from, Ken, you have anything else?
Council have anything else?
Yeah, I do. I'd like the record to show that I appreciate you, Ken and Kevin and Maurice and Chuck and Laura, their years of service to the county. We all got set up here, and we thank you for talking to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Community comment? Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Joint station adjourned.
Joint session is adjourned. The council's portion of the joint session is adjourned as well.